Roll call again, Mr. Gregg.
Here.
Ms. Casserly?
Here.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Here.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Here.
Ms. Yell?
Here.
Mr. Capoli?
Here.
Mr. Fowler?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Thank you. We'd like to proceed with the next applicant. We're going to change the order a little bit. We're going to have the applicant of application of Matthew Kelly, 1005 14th Avenue, second story addition.
Okay, and Mr. Chairman, if we could, before we begin here, we'll do a couple of procedural things, which is the norm. Did anyone here have any questions or comments or concerns regarding the notice they received from Mr. Kelly? So, the Board Secretary and I reviewed the notice and found everything to be in order. So what we'll do is a couple of things. Let's officially mark into the record what we as a board have had before us. A1 is a development application, and that's dated April 29, 2018. A2, I'm going to call it an application addendum. It's just some feeder information. A3 is going to be our Borough of Belmar Minor Land Use Certificate dated April 4, 2018, slash April 12, 2018. A4 is going to be an illustrated landscape sketch. It says not to scale. We can have the applicant testify momentarily who prepared that. A5 is a plan of survey, and that is prepared by Seneca Survey, and that's dated July 26, 2011. And A6 is the architectural plans, and they are prepared by Joanne Montero. It's called variance plans, and we'll mark that as A6. So what we'll do is, we will swear in Ted Bianchi. Ted, you are the zoning officer and construction official. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide to the extension provider will be the truth, the best you know, to help you guide?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Kennedy, really quickly, I just wanted to note is that I happen to know one of the applicants, we worked together many, many years ago, but it would not influence my decision that I went to go on.
Okay, so thank you very much. Interesting point, so there's nothing here, there's no direct financial or indirect financial relationship. So I very much appreciate the disclosure, and you said that there's nothing here that would compromise your ability to impartially review the application, so thank you. And ladies and gentlemen, as an extra treat, we have our Borough Engineer's side court engineer, Derek Jordan. And Derek, we'll swear you in. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide to the extension provider will be the truth, the best you know, to help you guide?
I do.
Okay. So against that backdrop, we'll swear you in. You can just, who's going to testify, all of you?
I guess primarily me.
Okay, so what's your name?
Matthew Kelly.
All right, and Kelly is K-E?
L-L-Y.
K-E-L-Y. Good evening, and welcome to the Belmar Zoning Board, and you are?
Margarita Kelly.
Okay, we'll swear you in as well. And you are?
Jeffrey Winters.
And you are testifying in your?
I'm a design consultant on this joint venture. I don't know if you get the names.
Okay, so what's your name again?
Jeffrey Winters.
And how you spell Jeffrey?
J-E-F-R-Y.
And your last name?
Winters.
Okay, and you are a design consultant?
Correct.
Okay. So if you all could raise your right hands, will you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the best you know, to help you guide?
Yes.
Okay. And just preliminarily, we're talking about the property, I believe it's 1005 14th Avenue?
Yes.
Okay, and are you the owners of that?
Yes.
And how long have you owned it, roughly?
Seven years.
Okay. And is there a single-family home at the site?
Yes.
And do you live there?
Yes.
Okay. And wanted to tell the board about the addition that you're proposing and why and the variance that you need.
Sure. So, hello everybody. Sorry, this is not as norm. I've never been to one of these before, so I'll just talk freely. My wife and I bought our house in about July 2011. It's one and a half story. There's a walk-up attic. There's nothing up there right now, no utilities or anything. And my wife was pregnant, and we're looking to put a proper second floor on there so we can stay in town. We did the minor land use survey. A couple of things came back from Mr. Bianchi, so we addressed those things and did the variance process. I can list each of the variances we're seeking, I guess, if that's what we do. So it's on one of the items that Mr. Kennedy referenced, it's variance plans, and I think it was one, two, three, and four, I think it's five items on there that we're seeking in the variance for. The minimum lot area. And may I say that all of these, I believe, except for one, are existing, non-conforming. So we're not really changing the boundaries of the property. We're changing the height without conforming, and we will not seek a variance for it. So with the exception of one, all of these setbacks and coverages are already, they're existing, coverages as they are now.
And just for the record, are you looking to, I read somewhere, put a second floor addition over the existing building?
It's one and a half floors. I'll say the half floor is the attic. The attic space will go away, and it will be the second floor, just on top of the first floor.
Okay, so you're not changing the building footprint?
No.
Okay, thank you.
So, and again, for those variances being sawed, the minimum lot area required is 5,000. It's existing 3964.44 square feet. So we're seeking variance for that, but that is the existing square footage. Similarly, the rear yard setback, the requirement's 35 feet. It's existing 20. It'll stay 20 feet, so we're seeking that variance. The side yard setback, just one side of the house, the requirement is five feet. The existing is 3.53 feet. That will stay the same. We're seeking that variance. The maximum building coverage principle, that's the only one that's going up. The required is 30%. It's existing at 33.5%. We're adding 1.5% to that for 34%. As I said, that's the only one that's currently not existing. And we're not doing any work to the detached garage, but it is already non-conforming. So while we're going through the variance process, we figured let's just add that on. So where existing that, which one is it? It is the existing side yard setback for the detached garage. The requirement is three feet. It is 1.6 feet currently. It'll stay 1.6 feet. And those are the charges, or those are the variances for which we're seeking. The other thing that I might say, and the whole reason we thought we might need a variance is because if you're looking at the variance plans of that front elevation at the top left, there's a second floor terrace. And I thought that's why we might need a variance at all, rather than the setbacks. I attended one meeting one day, and I heard from Mr. Kennedy after his language put in, another application for covered second floor terrace. I don't know what the standard for town is. And the coverage for it will really be the existing roofline coverage of about two feet if you look from an aerial view. It'll be the same. It won't extend beyond the existing roofline overhang for that terrace. I think that's really all I have to say. I don't know what else to, you got some questions like that?
Do you want to have your design consultant or your lawyer? Thank you very much. I think I'll start with the board questions, then Mr. Fowler.
Well, thank you so much, Mr. Vice Chairman. I can tell you, my God, this just feels so refreshing. Man, I don't know what to do. I might do the happy day.
I was going to say before, if we went first or second, I was so excited, so many people were concerned about.
Anyway, first off, congratulations on expecting a child. This will be your first?
Yes.
It's a beautiful thing. I have two lovely children. And I would do it all over again, but my wife won't. Anyway, let's get into just a couple of questions here. You're putting a second story on. What do you currently have? How many bedrooms do you have? How many bathrooms do you have before this construction takes place? What do you have now, brother? You don't need more than one toilet, so let's be clear.
Sure. We have three bedroom, one bath.
At present?
At present.
Okay.
And I believe the final plans will be four bedroom, three bath?
Yes.
Four bedroom, three bath.
So it's going to be four bedrooms and three baths?
Yes.
And let me just add that, we really only have one functioning bedroom. The other bedroom is so small, you can't put a twin-side bed in it, really, like in a four or five closet.
So how many bedrooms are going to be on the second floor?
Three.
Okay, three bedrooms on the second floor.
Yes.
And there's going to be another bathroom on the second floor?
Two.
Oh, well, let me guess, the master bathroom? I didn't say it.
With a bench.
Okay. Next question is, on your second floor, one goes up, and it's completed. When the water hits the roof, where's it going to go?
It's going to go to the gutters.
Okay, and the gutters will take it to where?
So currently, when you look at the house to the left side, it says, like, there's an existing roof on a little porch that you see there. The left side of the house currently goes to, there is underground drainage.
Is there?
Because the driveway's on that side of the house.
So can we tap into that?
Yes. Yeah, so that...
So you have any existing drive, you have existing driveways, basically, or catch bases?
Yes. Yeah, so yes, there's existing, downspouts.
What's happening on the other side?
The other side of the house currently, all the leaders go to, if you see, basically there's some, I'll say flower beds, grass.
So it stays on your property?
It stays on the property, yes.
Doesn't roll into the neighbor's backyard?
No.
Okay, cool. On the new construction, are you basically just going to be tapping into the electric or are you going to be getting all new electric?
We're upgrading. Upgrading the panels. The panel is old.
So you're putting in a whole new wiring system?
I believe so.
Well, can he tell you?
Well, more than likely, yes, we'll be upgrading to it.
Well, good answer, brother. And is the power coming overhead or is it underground?
It's existing overhead.
Is there a possibility of putting it underground? As this man next to me will ask you that question. So I'm asking it for him.
I could probably answer that.
Well, we answered.
No.
Okay, there's no possibility of putting it underground? All right, so it's going to stay above ground? Save you some money.
We aren't planning on changing any of the exterior utility, or utility surfaces.
Okay. Do you plan on using licensed contractors to do the work? Or are you going to be in the backyard playing handyman weekend?
No, we're planning on using licensed contractors.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
And if the application's approved, when would you like to get this thing underway?
As soon as possible.
Well, what are you expecting?
I'm due in September.
Did we come up with any names yet?
Oh, yeah, Manny.
Manny or Manny won't.
I guess that's the answer.
And what about them? I have no further questions, Mr. Vice Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler.
Well, thank you, sir. Manny answered all my questions.
It's a good thing, you're tired of it.
The only, the only I am. The only question I do have to Mr. Bianchi, would they, at this point, require a parking variance? And if they do, should we give it to them?
No, they don't. They have enough.
No further questions?
No questions, thank you.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
If I understand this correctly, it's just 18 additional square feet that you're adding to your footprint for lot coverage?
Yes, because I believe that's the, a little bit of a bump out if you look from an aerial view at that terrace.
I couldn't find what was the extra square footage, but only 18 square feet. So the only reason why we're meeting with this couple is because they need 18 square feet of block coverage?
No, they're building in the side yard setback. Even though it's...
So the...
It's within the five foot.
I get the pre-existing, but outside of the pre-existing, the only thing besides what already exists is 18 square feet.
This expansion, you're talking about building expansion?
Right.
Right. It's in the front, right?
Okay. I have no further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald.
Sure, and I may have missed it, but could you walk me through where the exterior AC condensers are going to be? Is there any change towards that fall?
I think I may have put a little lock in. And I know, Mr. Kennedy, you asked too, that the landscape plan, that was my best effort at doing a rough landscape plan. If you look at the landscape plan, in the back of the house, there's a little brown box. That's where the current AC unit is. It's definitely right close to the house. I'd say about 15 and 20 feet away from the back property line.
Like this guy?
That is it. That is it. So that will probably upgrade, but stay in the same location.
And that's well outside the setback issue, I think. In terms of the shed, because that's pre-existing, non-conforming, no changes, no upgrades, no reason to be finishing?
No changes to that at all, no. In fact, I mean, it is a garage. I don't know if that makes a difference in the terminology of legality, I think, but yeah, that's not changed.
So it's in good enough shape, it's kind of?
Oh, we'll leave it as is, yeah.
Those are the questions I have.
Mr. Gregg, I've looked at my paperwork, and it says that you're appealing the zoning officer's decision. Is that, you know, what decision are you appealing?
Just based on the minor land use survey that we got, returned to us, and it said denial, you need to apply for the variance.
Okay, so, Mr. Gregg, that's a good question. So what that technically means, I think what you're trying to say is you're just appealing the fact that you're appealing to the board for a variance. As opposed to the way Mr. Gregg is reading it, which is correct, is you're appealing Ted's decision because you think he made an incorrect decision. So I don't, I think you're saying that his decision is correct, you definitely variance relief. So we'll clarify that.
Oh, yeah, I wasn't saying that Mr. Bianchi's decision was wrong.
Right, and that's perfectly all right to say, because that's a whole separate category of appeal, but I think that was Mr. Gregg's question, so we'll clarify that. That's not...
Had that been the case, we'd have to do something different, but...
Right, so we'll just clarify that.
I don't think I have any other questions. Everybody can ask my questions already. That's the voice I favor being loud. Thank you, Mr. Gregg.
I just have one question. On your sheet, and I'm not sure which, it's the addendum, it says all the driveway must be included and purged, covered. That has been mitigated, there's recalculation?
Yes, well, we did it quickly, just taking sort of gross measurements of everything. So yes, the initial, we would have sought a variance for that too if it hadn't been over the hypervious surface coverage, but when we read the math, I think it came in just under that percentage that I can be. So it is, yeah, it is within the, I guess, the allowable amount.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Mr. Bianchi, do you have any?
Chuck, I think.
Oh, Chuck, oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, Chuck.
Can't see you over there. Yeah, that's all right. The only one I thought, I just want to make sure, I know some homes on that street have elevated, you meet the elevation.
Yes, we are very fortunate.
Our side of the street, luckily, where we are, when we purchased the house, it wasn't in a flood zone. We've checked since Sandy, and the flood maps haven't changed for our address.
Excellent. I just hate to see you start and then have to stop, so. That's the only question I have.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Mr. Bianchi, do you have any?
No, I'm...
Okay, thank you. You want to summarize?
Sure, do you want the public first?
Oh, maybe you should do that. With no further questions, I mean, open up the meeting to any public comments. If you have a comment, please come forth, state your name, your address.
Hi. Kyle Rizzicelli, 1003 14th Avenue.
Could you say your first name?
K-Y-L-E.
K-Y-L-E, and my name? T-E-L-L-O. Oh, good evening, and welcome. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide to the extension provider will be the truth, the best you know, to help you guide?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
I've lived in my house since 1985, and the Kellys have been there since about seven years or so. Best neighbors, and I think that, I don't see any reason why they should not be approved for their addition that they're doing. It's conforming to the neighborhood. They're going to make the house look gorgeous, and I just see no reason that you would deny them to improve the neighborhood, to improve their property, and for the fact that, since they're raising a family here, they want to stay residents of Belmar. And that was the one reason that they decided to put this addition on, is because they liked the town, they liked the location, and they didn't want to move. So I don't see any reason why they shouldn't be approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
Are there any other questions from the public? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion and open it up to board comments, starting with Mr. Fowler.
Well, thank you so much, Mr. Vice Chairman. I've been on this panel for over, twelve or thirteen years, and we've had applications come for us and go after us. And one of the things that's always stood out, and we seem to be getting away from that, so I find this application this evening, it's putting it back in perspective. We have a situation where a hardship has presented itself. Young couple goes out, in the heat of passion, she gets pregnant. Little champagne, maybe it was a... Does that mean I have to go to sexual harassment class? Anyway, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to make you laugh. I have a license of Mars Tech, in case you want those. But in either case, what we have in front of us is a hardship. And we sit here and we say to ourselves, can we justify allowing this application to be approved based on this hardship? And the hardship very simply is, we want to put a second floor in already existing building, and not really move the space or exacerbate the space or take up the entire lot. You just want to go on there, so that you have access to building your family. And I find that refreshing. I find that something that we need to continue to keep in perspective on, how does this hardship render our decision? So, Mr. Vice Chairman, based on the information that's been presented before me, I'd be inclined to vote in favor of this application. Thank you so much. I don't think I can add to that, brother. I also agree for the application.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald.
Well, I've been with Manny for about ten years, so that's, the hardship has been here. I am inclined to vote in favor of the application.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald.
I'll tell you, Mr. Fowler's a tough act. As he, I would be mine in favor, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Ms. Casserly?
I am thrilled to be supportive of friendly face, and in fact, for investing in our town and sticking around our rich family, and truly appreciate that, and a great welcome addition to Belmar, so I would definitely be in favor of the application.
Thank you, Ms. Casserly. Mr. Gregg?
I see no reason not to be in favor of the application.
Thank you, Mr. Gregg. I too am in favor of the application. Mr. Ruth?
Sure, Mr. Chairman, if this application is approved, I took the liberty of writing down some potential conditions of approval, and they basically would be things like the standard, compliance with all the promises and commitments and representations the applicants made during this public hearing process, compliance with all affordable housing regulations and building and construction codes, and getting all permits, and we generally say, grading and rating details to be reviewed and approved by the board engineer if necessary, if it might not be necessary. We'll clarify that there is no appeal of the zoning officer's decision, compliance with any applicable FEMA regulations, but it sounds like they're not. They're pretty standard conditions that's acceptable to the motion there in the second or if the board is inclined to accept those.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Can I have a motion to approve this application?
I will make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Casserly. Thank you for that second, Mr. Capoli.
Mr. Gregg?
I'm in favor, yes.
Ms. Casserly?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Ms. Yell?
Yes.
Mr. Capoli?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Good luck, Chris.
Thank you.
Just give us a minute.
Carl, you take good care of yourself. I'll see you when I see you.
The next application is 110th Avenue Associates LLC.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, as the applicant's representatives come forward, just a couple of things. This is a continuation of a hearing. I recall that we are almost towards the end, but I refer to Mr. Ravino on that. You'll recall, we started on January 25, 2018, and then we had transcripts, and we marked as B1, Ms. Casserly's review of them, but then it turns out that they weren't the whole thing. So what we're going to do is, we're going to mark as B2, the certification, we have a certification, right?
Yes.
From Board Member Casserly, that she reviewed the January 25, 2018 transcripts. And we're going to mark as B3, certification from Board Member Mark Fitzgerald. He read the January 25, 2018 transcripts. And again, I thank you both, because it's very important, and this is a use variance application, requires five affirmative yes votes, and so it is important that we offer a complement of seven voting, Board Member, and I guess, Ms. Casserly, we're going to give you an extra special, because you reviewed them essentially twice. So that's that.
Question, Mr. Kelly.
Yeah.
On the original presentation in January, you guys have to help me out on this, were we at the point of making a decision, so it was postponed? Were they asked to come back?
There were some discussions, as I recall. I reviewed the transcript today.
Why?
And Mr. Ravino will address it, but I recall that there were some discussions about leasing arrangements and association regulations, so I'm imagining Mr. Ravino will talk about that tonight.
Okay, so do we have to go through the whole presentation again?
No, absolutely not.
So we're going to get the abbreviated version?
Yes.
We hope you give the abbreviated version.
The Yankees aren't playing tonight, all right.
And then...
You heard that, the abbreviated version.
Then, so let me get my 30K. Oh, that was...
Right.
So we're going to swear in for the final time tonight. Ted Bianchi, you are a zoning officer and construction official. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide to the extension provider will be the truth, the best you know, to help you guide?
Yes.
Okay. And for the second time tonight, Derek Jordan, our Borough Engineer's side court engineer, we welcome him to the zoning board, and do you swear that the testimony information you're about to provide to the extension provider will be the truth, the best you know, to help you guide?
I do.
Okay. And then on top of that, Mr. Acting Chairman, you'll recall at the last notice, I mean, at the last meeting, I think there was a suggestion that we sort of renotice because the time. So the applicant, Mr. Ravino, renoticed, and we appreciate that. Did anyone have any, here have any questions or comments regarding the renoticing? Okay, so we appreciate that. Again, not a legal requirement, but sometimes, yeah, sort of when it gets old, you want to do that. So the Board Secretary and I reviewed the notice and found everything to be in order. So against this backdrop, we will turn it over to Mr. Ravino. So against this backdrop, we will turn it over to Mr. Ravino, good evening.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Kennedy. Thank you for the opportunity to be back tonight. We were, technically, we were here, we made the presentation, you're correct, Mr. Fowler.
Okay.
On January 25th, 2018.
Right.
Where we completed testimony of the case, and the board went into caucus discussion, discussed the matter.
Right.
It went on back and forth, and there were some issues that we said we'd try and resolve, and we'd come back. We were supposed to be back on February 22nd, but you only had, I think you only had five board members available that night. I was sick in March. We came in April, there was some issue as to the transcripts.
Right.
So we agreed to get new transcripts, and make sure we got the right ones, which we did, and...
Mr. Kennedy, were there any revisions to that building since?
Minor, just minor revisions, which will testify to.
Minor revisions?
Yes. The outside of buildings remained the same. The inside of the building, the only thing that's really changed is that there was some concern about the den on the inside had a closet, so we removed the closet.
Was that the unit he was staying in?
Oh.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Kennedy.
So all, all the, and I'll have the architect confirm this, but all the dens, the closets have been removed in each of the dens, in each of the six units. And we've also added a second bathroom. There was some comment, one bathroom doesn't sound like such a hot spot. So we, we added the second bathroom, so that's really the only change that we made to the unit. We cleaned up some of the, this, little mistake, yep. We cleaned up some, some of the engineering issues as far as the garbage and a couple of things like that. We also consulted a attorney who does some bylaws. And we got, it's very expensive to get a whole set of bylaws. We did not, we did not want to pay eight, $10,000 for a whole set of bylaws. But what we did was, we spent some time calling some language that I thought would be applicable to some of the issues that were raised at the last hearing. It probably took me about, like, I'll hand these out, probably, probably take me about five or 10 minutes to read this into the record, if the board wants me to do it, because I think that probably would be appropriate then.
Sure.
And I think that addresses some, some of the concerns that creates. I will tell you, I think there was some issue as to rental, how long, I'll get to the gist of it at the beginning. My client would rather not limit the rentals to less than 30 days. He's agreed, anything that has to be rented, anything that, any rentals there have to be for a period of at least 30 days. And I'll read you some of the other stuff there. And it cannot be, the whole unit has to be rented, no transient tenants. There's some concerns now with air bid and so forth. So that was one of the issues that was addressed at the last meeting. As I said, with the board's permission, I can hand, I'll have this marked, and I can hand some of these out.
I think we're up to, if I have one more for her, A12, is that somewhere? One more, this is A12. And just for the record, A12 is, these are the proposed bylaws?
These are proposed portion of the bylaws, not the whole set.
Okay, thank you.
These are the condominium bylaws.
Correct. We would, if this was approved, we would agree as a condition of resolution that these are any suggestions that you might have that we agree upon would be made part of any bylaws.
Guys, one more for her.
Sure. I don't know if I have enough, if we can get her back.
We could share up here.
Excuse me.
No, no, there's a public portion of the meeting, and we'll get to that.
It's not the public portion I was asking. I was just wondering, as a board, if you could present to all of us, since it's carrying all these dates, could you just tell the, what this is going for in general? Would that be stated for everybody here?
Just for the record, Mr. Chairman, I'll just, from the Board Engineers Review Memorandum, this is A5, January 22nd, 2018. It says, "The applicant is seeking preliminary and final site plan approval for the demolition of two existing structures and the construction of three two-family dwellings. The applicant is also requesting a conditional use variance, and both variances for a multi-family cluster development. The 0.26 acre property has frontage on 10th Avenue and is within the borough's R75 residential zone." That's the general gist of, of, of the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
And if I, if I could read it, it'd just take a minute.
Sure.
If I would understand, the ordinance itself is 40-6.13, which seems to be especially designed ordinance. For the borough, it states multi-family cluster development. It says a multi-family cluster development is permitted as a condition of use to allow for the transition from existing high-density residential uses exceeding seven dwelling units per lot. Now, on this, there's, there was testimony that we have 10 units on this lot. And it specifies hotels, working houses, and to provide for creation of a multi-family attached townhouse-style cluster development within the R75 zone. So this project is recognized as allowed in the zone. The reason why we're here before the Board of Adjustment is not, and not the Planning Board, is because the ordinance requires a minimum of 14,000 square feet. We have 11,250 square feet. And the ordinance also requires side-by-side units, four side-by-side units. We have three units, two side-by-side, one upstairs, downstairs.
Okay, sitting, and you have three?
We're proposing three units.
That hasn't changed from the...
And the, each unit has, I'm sorry, I should just use the, I'm fixing up the term unit and building. We're proposing three buildings, two, two buildings that will have two units and then side-by-side, and one building which will have over and under units.
How many buildings are on the site right now?
Two.
Is this two buildings on the site right now?
I'm sorry, I got that backwards. It's two up and down, and one side-by-side. The total is six units.
But that was what the original opinion?
Exactly, I just, I just posted that.
There's going to be three buildings with six units?
Correct.
Total?
Correct.
And in two of the buildings, how many units are there?
All buildings have two units.
Okay, so the third building, which you're going to reside in, is going to have two units also?
I'm just thinking a little bit. You know, we just, I just identified yourself as a record, let, let go stand.
You guys got this?
I'm sorry? Can you say your last name again?
And, yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, and I think you were supervisor last meeting.
You were?
Yes.
And you recognize still under oath?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
There's three buildings with two units in each.
Total of six units.
Six. So if I could just, I'll, I'll try.
So can I ask a question?
Wait, you want to wait?
So I don't understand why it's listed here as construction of three two-family homes.
It's each building has two units.
So that's, it applies, called the two, two-family home. That's very different than a condominium.
Right, it's a townhouse, if they're two-family.
Right, so this is not correct.
Where are you reading from?
From our agenda.
Oh, okay.
You're going by their application?
Right, but then the application's not correct, like, they're, I, I, I don't do construction, but I certainly understand the difference between a house and condos.
Right, they testified at the last meeting that their application is for townhomes.
Town.
Under the multi-family cluster ordinance.
That's what, okay.
All right, thank you.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, okay.
Just to read briefly through the bylaws, we have restriction on, on use of units in order to provide for congenial occupancy of the property for protection of the back of the units. Use of the property, including the association property, shall be restricted to and shall be accordance with the following provisions. A, the units shall be used as residence only. B, the common elements, as well as the property and facilities of association, shall be used only for reasons we suit it in which are incidented, incident to, to the use and occupancy of the units and parking spaces. C, no nuisances shall be maintained by any unit owner, nor shall any use or practice be allowed by any owner which is a source, source of annoyance to or which interferes with the peaceful, peaceful possession or proper use of the units or common elements by unit owners or any surrounding property owners. Violation of these bylaws shall be considered a severe violation and will subject the unit owner to monetary penalties whether the unit owner is in possession or not, meaning that the unit owner rents it. D, no immoral, proper, offensive, or unlawful use shall be made of any unit or part thereof of the common elements, and all valid laws, zoning law, ordinance, and regulations of all government bodies having jurisdiction thereof shall be observed. Violations of laws, orders, rules, regulations, or requirements of any government agency having jurisdictionship thereof shall be complied with by and at the sole expense of the unit owner or their association, whichever shall have the obligation to maintain or repair such portion. Violation of this section shall subject the unit owner to monetary penalties whether the unit owner is possession or not of said violations. If said violations are caused by a tenant using the premises, and said violation violates the Delmar Animal House Law, then said unit owner shall immediately seek summary dispossess of said tenant and shall cooperate with authorities under the Delmar Animal House Law to rid the premises of the nuisance. E, no leasing of any kind of a unit shall be permitted without first obtaining the approval of the Board of Trustees with at least 14 days' notice to the board. The Board of Trustees shall have the right to require that a uniform lease be used. The Board shall have the right to reject respective tenants based on background check information to be submitted to the board. F, no portion of any unit other than the entire unit may be rented. No transient tenants shall be allowed. Transient tenants shall be defined as tenants who occupy the premises for less than 30 days. A violation of C, D, E, F above shall subject the unit owner to fines and penalties above to $1,000 per incident. And then it goes on to say that if they're not paid, they can lean against the premises. And it also goes on to say, if any said, the unit owner who has not paid the fine shall lose their governing privileges. In addition, upon the third violation, the unit owner shall lose all rights to any future rental of the premises. If the Board of Trustees desires to assess a penalty as defined above, the tenant shall be entitled to a hearing before any fines or penalties are assessed. And it says further rules that may be promulgated. And then it goes on to say, the foregoing provisions have been established in order to maintain the community of congenial residents in the buildings and to assure the approval or responsibility of each unit in order to pay those obligations. And then the last item here says, "The Board will give contact information of at least one board member to all contiguous neighbors and those across the street. And upon reasonable request of those neighbors, they can appear at a Board of Trustees meeting to make any statements to the Board that they deem necessary rates." We thought that, that, I know there was some comments of, some board members wanted longer restrictions. My client thought about it, he's agreed to nothing less than a month. And we tried to put some rules and regulations together to certainly be able to have a nice site and a nicely run, nicely run unit set on the site.
Thank you. Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Should we speak about this right now, or should we go through the whole, all the changes? Because there's some other changes, which do you think we...
Well, we wanted to see that.
You want to just go through, you want us to adjust this right now, or you want to take it long? Okay, why don't we, why don't we do all of them, and then we can go to the board comments?
Go ahead.
You took a den out and added a bathroom, right?
Yes, yes, very good.
So, what do you need to tell me about?
As a lawyer, I, I, I can make representations, but I, the architects have to...
This is the architect?
Yeah.
Let me guess, you took a den out and you added a bathroom, or something like that? Do we need to talk about that?
And you know, just for the record, your name?
Brian Rizzi.
And Brian, you were previously sworn, I believe, right?
Yes, I was.
And you understand it's still under oath?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you.
So, one of the previous comments was that...
Use the microphone. Don't sing, but just, you know, you can belt it out if you have it in there.
I got some tippin' in my pocket, can you, can you blow a couple notes?
All right, so, one of the previous comments was that the den that we had proposed included a closet and that looked too much like a bedroom, although it didn't have any doors on it, had a six-foot trimmed opening. It's still, we understand that, so what we did in this plan is we took the closet out of the picture. So there is still a den. It's just a trimmed, a six-foot wide trimmed opening going into a room. No closet, just a room with windows. And in order to...
And Brian, I wanted to just interrupt one.
Yes.
Are there revised plans that I need to submit, or?
Yeah, we should have those marked. We should have those marked.
Okay, so we are up to A13, and just, what is A13?
It is just the revised plan.
All right, so it's revised architectural plans?
Yeah.
All right, so prepared by your office?
Correct.
So, Mr. Kennedy, did the members that live within 200 feet have to get the, did they get the revisions?
Yeah, I don't think that, that, the, the plans have been revised per se, they're going to testify about it now.
Okay, I'm just asking, all that money you're making over there.
Right. And let me just, Brian, is there a date on that?
Yes, that is April 23rd.
April 23rd, 2018, got it.
So, other than that, in part to removing the closet, one of the amenities that we added was a second bathroom, because that was a concern last time. Obviously, as we're trying to market these units as what we were entertaining for a certain price point, having certain amenities would be a requirement, so that's why we included the second bathroom. And really, with that, the only other change was that the laundry room moved over, and that was it.
Can we see that, or do you want to see?
Of course.
Thank you.
This is the one den?
Yes.
One unit, and the other den is up here.
But how many bathrooms now?
Two bathrooms.
So when there was only one previously?
Correct.
What did, what did we say, we think generally that the use would price that itself for?
I don't know.
What did we say?
We could say that.
That was, that was...
We thought the market would trade at least a half a million dollars, or 450? Or additionally, one bathroom?
Now it's two?
Okay. All right, so where are we going now, Mr. Kennedy?
I'm just, we're just going to wait for the review of that fifth end.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. West, Kennedy.
Mr. Greg, we do what his field does.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, I think there was just one other issue that, that was brought up in the, in the January meeting, and that was the garbage, so...
Yeah, I was going to, just ask three other questions. The, on the engineers' plan, this is DeFalco, you added, if I could go through this pretty quickly for you. There were some questions as to an underground perforated underground storm system. What did, what did you do with that?
And just for the record, Mr. DeFalco, you were sworn in at the January meeting, correct?
Yes. Yes, that is correct.
And you recognize it's still under oath?
Yes, thank you. So there were three changes made to the engineering plan. One comment of the board members was that we could introduce an underground pipe to dissipate the runoff from the site. So we've added that pipe within the driveway between the rear building and the street. So we have a perforated pipe with a stone trench under the ground, under the driveway. And we have a catch base in that accepts the, the surface water, lets it get into that pipe, and then percolate into the ground. The second change was that we added a location for the trash outside. We had initially thought that we could have cans or bags in garage, like a home, I would have a can in the garage and bring it out during trash day. Rather than that, we have an outdoor six-by-10 trash enclosure on each side of the rear building. We have two six-by-10 enclosures for each of the three that would be on that side of the site. So three, three of the units would use one six-by-10 area. The other three would use the trash enclosure on the opposite side. And the third and final change was that there was a question as to where are the air conditioning units being placed? So behind the trash enclosure, on either the left or right side of the rear unit, we have three on the left side, three pads on the left side, and three pads on the right side. One unit for each, one air conditioning unit for each of the units. And the units in the front will be piped and plumbed to the rear condenser.
And the units in the front will be piped and plumbed to the rear condenser. So, they won't be adjacent to the front buildings at all. They won't be against it.
That won't be a problem with the.
Not a problem at all. Those are the changes that we made.
Mr. Kennedy, appropriate type of round for board comments?
Yes, sir. Or, or the public, are we going to do the first word?
I'd like to first hear what the, what the board's feeling is relative to this change.
Good.
You start with the, we want to hear what the public comments are, that might include what we have to say. Okay. Well, we can come back.
I would make more.
Okay.
All right.
We're going to open this up to public comments. And I guess what we need to understand is the, the changes that were made were what the board requested at the, at the previous meeting. So, if you're familiar with those changes and you either agree or disagree with those changes, how they impact the site, then we'd certainly like to hear from you. So, with this, I'll open up to board com, or public comments. And ask you if you would come forward, please state your name and your address. Yes?
Okay. And as the first witness comes up, let me just, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Rabiner just handed me the old mark as A-14. And this is the plan prepared by J K R Engineering, and it is dated April 7th, 2017, last revised June 28th, 2018. So, we'll just mark that. I'm sorry, can you just say your name, please?
Ms. Vicki Runner.
And I think you were sworn previously, right?
Yes.
Okay, still under oath. Thank you. What do you mean?
Okay. So, I think I missed one meeting in between, because there were so many dates that I kept changing. So, I just want to clarify a few things. When I was here, there were two buildings in the front that had side-by-side units, correct? And that's what we still have. And each unit has how many bedrooms?
Just to rehash, the two front buildings are stacked units. So, one unit is on the first floor, the second unit is on the second floor. It's the back building that is side-by-side.
Okay.
And each one of these units has two bedrooms.
Two bedrooms?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So, in the rear, what is this right now? Was it about six units you had in the back?
There's five units.
Five units in the back? And we can discuss whether there was heat in those units, that they were basically summer rentals. And was that clarified, that there is heat, or wasn't heat?
There's electric heat.
There's electric heat. So, they have been rented year-round?
At one time.
At one time? What year was that?
I don't recall.
So, it was a long time ago. Basically, they've been summer rentals.
We changed them to summer rentals.
Okay. So, you changed them to summer rentals. So, now, from five units in the back, how many units will there be?
Uh, two.
Two units?
Yeah.
Okay. And the previous applicant submitted a landscape design for one little house. Is there a landscape design for this property? Or did you have to do that?
I believe that was submitted already.
Okay. Because I don't see it up here. So, just like I said, there was so many different dates that this was heard. So, there is a landscape plan. And I guess my concern, and it would be entire lot sizes, what size?
Eleven-two-fifty.
What is it?
Seventy-five by one-hundred-and-fifty, which is eleven thousand two hundred and fifty.
Seventy-five by one-hundred-and-fifty is the entire property?
Correct. Which is eleven thousand two hundred and fifty.
So, I'm not sure if anybody's heard the rumble, from different things going on because of different applications coming forward.
Mr. Chairman, I don't like to object to something like that, but what's going on in other applications that have nothing to do with this?
Okay. Let me board it differently. The rumble I put in the room tonight is about people, even like myself, who own multiple houses on one street. When, and if this is approved, does it open it up to a seventy-five by one-fifty lot for anyone in town to follow suit?
I'd like to address that.
I would love that.
Okay. And that's why I said your ordinance is, is unique. First of all, it only deals with special areas of town. And the, it says, part of the ordinance says, a multi-cluster development, a multifamily cluster development is permitted as a conditional use to allow for the transition from existing high-density residential units exceeding seven dwelling units per lot. So, hypothetically, if somebody owned a, a house on a larger lot in town, and they said, oh, the board just gave Mr. Antipen a variance to build these units, I would like to do the same thing. We couldn't, you couldn't stop them from doing it, but this ordinance, this forty-six-point-thirteen seems to be, have been developed by the town to get rid of multi, high-density multifamily units. So, certainly, you know, we're here in front of the board saying, we're going to get rid of all this stuff, give us these six units. Somebody coming in, it would not be allowed, it would be a use variance. I can't say that they could make the case that the board might grant, but I, I wouldn't want to take the case. It would be an awful difficult.
Okay. So, how have the units been lowered? Remember the first one, I think they were much higher.
Another six, they said, yeah.
Okay. And then the, the driveway, is it asphalt, is it pavers? What are the driveway?
Asphalt.
Is all asphalt. And the parking, I think, was discussed, is all underneath each unit?
We can form the parking, the road.
So, how many parking spaces are there, to tell?
There are six garages and six on-site parking spaces, which is two per unit.
Two per unit, six spaces. And what is required?
Two per unit.
Two per unit. Okay. So, you've got the requirements of all the parking.
Correct.
And the only other question I have, something you mentioned about bylaws, and the person in charge to make the decision, the board trustees, or the board trustees?
Well, they would have to be developed. If the board approves this, at some point, a formal set of condominium documents would have to be developed. The condominium documents typically provide for turnover at some point from the developer to the unit owners. When it goes to the unit owners, the unit owners elect the board trustees.
So, if there's.
And board directors.
Owners. So, we send separate owners?
Correct. They would all be on the board of trustees.
Every owner would be on the board of trustees.
Board of directors.
If someone could rent for, for the days of that, would you say?
No. The owners would be on the board of directors. The tenants do not have a right to, would not have a right to be on the board of directors. You'd have to be an owner.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
There were six separate owners.
Correct.
One of each unit.
Each.
And they're all on the board of trustees.
Correct.
So, you would be able to rent usually.
Well, the renting and the board of directors have a thing. The only thing the board of directors has to do with the tenants, the possible tenants, is number one, they have to approve. So, anybody who wants to rent a unit would have to submit a formal application, at least within fourteen days of the rental of a unit, to the board of directors with some background information to allow the tenant onto the premises. And the tenant would have to rent the premises for at least thirty days and abide by our law, being a citizen section that we put in the ordinance. If they violate, if the tenants violate that, or even hypothetically, if you had a noisy owner, if, if a noisy owner violated that, then there's certain rights and remedies that the board director has to violate, to go after those unit owners.
Okay. The reason I ask is because of, when you're going, you didn't purchase them, you said you're just going to kind of buy things other than places I've used. And many cases, we'll do a percentage of units.
I know, though, that's, that's, a formal set of condominium documents can go up to seventy to a hundred pages, and they're not cheap to get.
I understand.
Okay? We didn't want to draft, because ninety percent, ninety-nine percent of those have nothing to do with this hearing. What we tried to do was just take a couple pages from various documents. I spoke to somebody who does a lot of condominium work, asked him to supply me with stuff. And we also looked on our own on some cases and so forth, and this is what we came up with.
Okay. So, if it's not done by a percentage?
No, at some point, it will be done by a percentage. In other words, if the board approves this, at some point, you divide six into the amount of, the size of the units and this, that, the other thing, and you come up with a percentage. Let's call it fourteen percent. Each unit owner would, would have a fourteen percent of the, of the common space in the development. And they will be labeled unit, whether they're labeled unit one, or A, or O, that's how we put it.
Okay. So, the ones I looked into, if it was, you know, a hundred units, and you allow twenty percent of the hundred units to be rented, that's few.
No, no, I think you're, I think.
I'm going by the number of units, six units.
I think what you're talking about is probably something to do with low-cost, less-cost houses for more.
Yeah.
If I, if I may, I think what you might be talking about is sometimes in association regulations, if someone's buying into a unit and getting a mortgage, sometimes the mortgage companies have a requirement that if there is a more than a percentage of X that are rented and not owner-occupied, sometimes the mortgage companies have an issue with that. So, I think that's maybe what you're asking about.
Yes. There's a percentage of being able to rent. So, I'm asking, out of the six units, will all six units be allowed to be rented?
Correct.
They would all be allowed to be rented?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes. Confirm which state you're in?
Good evening. I'm Mark Presto. I live at 11013 W.
And I think you were sworn in last time?
Uh, yes. A couple of months ago.
You're still under oath.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to, just to clear the record up.
Sure.
We were back here in April, and there was, we didn't present any testimony. So, there was, so we did not really have a vote here in, in April.
It was, it was a general.
The only hearing we really had was in January.
Correct.
Okay. First of all, the property doesn't qualify for the multifamily cluster development. So, you know, it's annoying to hear, we would qualify, except guess what? We only have eighty percent of the property requirement. And, and there's not seven units, there's six units that are currently on the property. So, yes, they're asking for a variance, give them that. But don't make it sound like, oh, you know, we should get it because of this multifamily cluster ordinance. Now, as far as these dens, taking the bedroom, making, I'm sorry, taking the closets out is not considered a bedroom. I think they could easily be used as a bedroom. They probably would be, and there's no control on that. Why you have to have six units altogether, I think would be more reasonable to have four units. Two buildings, side-by-side, might be comparable for this size lot versus three buildings, two side-by-side, or actually, they don't even meet that. They're not all side-by-side, some of them are up and down. And I would even suggest that, just call them three bedrooms. This way, you have the same number of bedrooms. You have twelve bedrooms in either one of those cases. But they're legitimate bedrooms, with two baths. A lot of the premise here is to, we have a bad situation, it's an animal house type. I don't know if it's designated as an animal house currently, is it? Is it currently an animal house?
Yes.
All right. So.
Yes, it is.
Okay. Thank you. So, what's going on in the town is that people get rewarded for bad behavior. Let me. Let me have an animal house, make a lot of ruckus, get the police here, blah, 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 and I'll be rewarded, because now I can build six units and make a, a nice profit on that. There's other ways to deal with animal houses. We have regulations in place in town, and people need to call the police and, and enforce those regulations. You'll get fined, the tenants get fined, the homeowners, you'll have to post a bond, you'll have police out there, and ultimately, they will lose their mercantile license. That's the way to deal with it, not rewarding bad behavior. You have, if you, if you lose your mercantile license, what's that property worth getting? Not too much, is it? So, and the, and the other thing, I have less concern about what's in the homeowners association or the bylaws, because unless I won't, is that once you get these six families, or how many families they are, I, I think it's a stroke of a pen, an agreement among the majority of them, to change those rules.
Yes. Just to interrupt.
Yeah.
I, we had, I said we would agree to make those a condition of the resolution. They would not be changed.
Okay. We appreciate that. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, come forward, please, and state your name. Andrew.
Good evening. Randy Brazil, 10111. I'm a real estate attorney.
Just say your last name, please.
B-R-A-Z-E-L.
Did I, for your uncles?
Didn't.
Okay. Welcome. Please provide the information and testimony you're about to provide to the extension provider, and we'll be the truth, the best we know, to help you out.
Sure.
Thank you.
What this gentleman just said is correct. They can put anything they want into those bylaws, and when you have a majority and you have a board that's, that's yours, they can change those bylaws.
And, and, just, let me interrupt you. I've stipulated to the board that if this project is approved, the bylaws that we read into the record become part of the resolution of approval, and a conditional resolution of approval is that those specific items cannot be changed or amended.
And when the, and when the board takes over, the board can change them.
They can, because they would not have any right to change them. They would be in contravention of the board's resolution.
You know what I would like? I would like for the person who's speaking to finish, and then if you have comments, please stop interrupting, because I'd like to hear what they have to say.
But it's just wrong.
I understand that, but, and just, let her, let her finish her statement, so we can understand, and she can express herself, he or she, and then you are, we're happy to hear what you have to say as well. I've represented many condominium association boards in my career, and we've changed rules and regulations. We've changed rules and regulations where the builder has said you cannot rent, you must rent for six months at a time, you must rent for one year at a time, you can't rent at all. It's all been changed. It's very easy to change. It's not a big deal. You go, you can go before the DCA, you can not go before the DCA. It's been changed. It's happened in my career. It's happened. Number, number two, I don't know, is now the time to comment on the entire project, or just on the things that they were just talking about?
I mean, we generally.
Okay. I had a whole speech prepared for the last thing that was adjourned. I can just give you part of that speech. I've, I've lived here as a full-time resident since right, right before Superstorm Sandy. I came before this board to renovate my house. I used Mr. Shipers and Mrs. Hearn's. They did a great job for me. I came, I, I improved my house, I, I, and they did a wonderful job for me, and I love living here. I live here full-time. I did not move here to have condominiums around me. I just did not. This is a central topic. There have been many, many discussions in my home, and I'm an empty nester, and I, I love living here. It is, it is, it is a dream come true to live here. There have been many discussions in my home that if projects like this get approved, we put our house on the market. Some, some developer can take my house and put some condos on if they want to. I won't stay. This is not why I moved here. And this is not why my neighbors moved here. This is, there are many of us that feel this way. It is not right. Please listen to your residents. Please do the right thing by us. Thank you. And I.
You said you're, you're a real estate attorney, and you've reviewed, worked on condominium documents and so forth. Have you ever worked on a project where a board of adjustment or appointing board has specifically adopted a resolution of approval with certain conditions in it, stating that stating that certain things have to be put in the bylaws of an association?
Even if they agreed to put it in there, once the board, once there's a master deed presented and once there are bylaws, and once somebody, the entire board takes over, they can change it. They just-
But they would be in contravention-
They're the owners of the property.
Do you understand that the resolution of approval runs with the property and any conditions of a resolution of approval runs with the condition of a property?
I hear you and I feel that you're being very condescending in your tone, and I do appreciate it.
Well, you were, I'm just asking you a question.
I'm talking to the board.
Okay, you know what?
That's all, I'm done there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please come forward, state your name and your address. Good evening.
Good evening. I was here in January, my name is James Lor Tamsel.
Speaker.
109 10th Avenue.
Okay, so you were previously sworn in.
I was.
Thank you, so you're still under oath.
So it was refreshing to hear the conversation. I continue to listen to the discussion about rental. As someone who lives next door to the current property that's been rented every summer, and whether it is or it isn't an animal house, it defies logic. So it's very easy to say, call law enforcement. But I have stained glass windows and they're antique. And I refuse to call because I said to my wife, somebody will throw a stone through the window and then we're out an antique window, so we'll win the battle, we'll lose the war. I listen to this discussion and I say, where's common sense? If we're going to build places, why have a 30-day clause? Why don't we just say we're going to draft it so that it needs to be rented consecutively for 366 days? Because what I sense here is, we're getting a little fed up with this concept of renting. I sit and say to myself, if the place doesn't sell, are they required to post money to maintain the property? Because if someone wants to drive down 10th Avenue, take a peek at the current property and see how it's being maintained. There's a discussion about how we're going to maintain trash. Take a drive down 10th Avenue on a Sunday and take a look at how many bags of trash line the street. And if you want to know what's in said bags, come over to 109. Because when they're ripped open, the contents of 111 end up on 109. So I'd be happy to share with you the contents of said bags. Now, when you call law enforcement, law enforcement says, they're not allowed to be noisy at any time. I used to think, ha, give them a break, they're young. I was young once, let them have their fun. Now I'm told that fun has limitations. But I sit and listen to everything being discussed from a dumpster and how many units were being put in. And I watch what's happened on 10th Avenue. The wonder of 10th Avenue today is people are investing in homes.
Yes.
And I sit in front of you and I want you to understand. I own a home in Colorado. I had this house, and I was also there before Superstorm Sandy, and I invested in the house. And I want to make another investment in the house. How refreshing to hear the young couple in front of you guys saying they want to do it. I want to do something to my home on 109. You know what my wife said? We are at the mercy of 111. And what I say to myself, out of respect to this gentleman, is if this gentleman doesn't get his desired application, is anyone back here wondering what's plan B? Because as a tenant who's at 109, who's watched the animal house and who watches it on an annual basis, I keep saying, you're damned if you do, you're damned if you don't. And the last thing I'll say is, a landscape plan is critical because it needs to be addressed, how are we going to maintain it? And I don't quite understand how we're going to corral the garbage. I heard six by 10. I'm assuming they're not dumpsters. Like, I'm praying in my heart of hearts, those aren't going to be dumpsters back there. I'm just thinking they're going to take trash cans and put them in some type of device. If they're dumpsters, I would like to know if they're dumpsters. But all I say to the board is if 30 days is part of a contract and we all sit here and think the objective is not to allow someone who gets it to continue the current sins, I think we're naive. I think we need to make it 366 days. And I thank you for your time and listening to me speak, so.
Thank you. Just one second, we have a question from the board for you.
Sir, I remember last time that you spoke, I'm sorry, what is your name again?
It's Jim.
Hi, Jim, sorry.
It's okay.
I remember, you know, what you talked about and what is going on on your street. And I asked you, were you for or were you against the project? And at that time, you said, yes, I am for the project. So I guess it's the same question.
I sit here and say to myself, I don't know what plan B is. So I, you know, and this is probably not for me to know what plan B is. But it's been allowed to operate the way it is, the trash is allowed. And by the way, if anyone up there thinks those bungalows, bedrooms matter, I sit- bedrooms? Bedrooms? The bungalows, whether they have heat or they don't have heat, there's probably 12 to 14 tenants in each one of those bungalows. So I sit and say to myself, am I for it? My wife says to me, look at what we look at now. What are you going to do? My wife was begging me not to speak tonight. She's not here, so I'm going to tell her I'm speaking. But, but I sit, I sit, I'm listening. I am not for, I am not for 30 days rent. I am not for that clause. If that's the clause, if they're going to build something and nearby laws, somebody could say 30 days, tenants. Let me tell you something about a transient. It takes 31 days to figure out their transient. You got to really claw, 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 claw. So no, I'm not for 30 days renting. I'm not. I didn't hear about that. I respect what they're trying to do. If they really don't want renters to buy these properties, make it 366 days. That becomes somebody who's going to be there for a year. And you know what? If they're out of control, we got time to get them out. So I'm not for that rental clause.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please come forward, state your name and your address, please.
Ronnie Liptse, 217 11th Avenue.
Sorry, I spelled your last name?
L-I-P-T-S-E-T-T.
And did you get sworn in last time?
No.
Okay. Good evening and welcome. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide to the extent you provide and will be the truth, to the best of your knowledge, to help you guide?
Yes.
Thank you.
I had a seven room, not an animal house, but I rented it out. And 50 by 150 lot. I went before the board. I wanted to live here permanently, but I wanted to have a rental property for that. And my home, and you said, no. You said, your goal is to make this a single-family neighborhood. You want us to be, you're happy that I'm coming here full-time. And the only concession that was made was I have an attached garage instead of having a garage in the back. I adhere to the farm, I adhere to the land coverage and the setbacks, everything you've asked of me. And I think my house came out lovely. I'm very happy to be here full-time. But what I don't understand is, I had a choice. I could have left it the way it was or I did what I did. I don't understand how people come before the board now. And you're saying, all right, like lesser of two evils? No, what's the goal for Belmar?
Yes.
Think what it's going to be here in 10 years. And that's what I want you to think about. And I, if I'm addressing condominium situation, I do real estate management and I have many apartments and covered bridge. And I know what goes on with these condominiums and the boards. They, it's a state rule, the boards have to adhere. But I agree, it has to be a 365-day lease. If it's not a 365-day lease, it's going to be Airbnb, it's going to be transient. And that defeats all your goals. That's it. Thank you.
Please come forward. David Pranathis, 106 15th Avenue.
Were you previously sworn in?
I was.
Okay, you're still under oath, thank you.
I wanted to ask a question, how many dens are there?
There's six units, six dens.
Six units, six dens. Do you have the full variance in front of you of 40-16-13?
Could you speak up 10, please?
Yeah.
Can you read?
Could you please- Yeah.
Could you read subsection each form?
On 13? There's no curb cut for a driveway line where it says mixed bedrooms and all rooms, exclusive of living rooms? I'm not sure where you're talking about. Talking about 40-7-30, correct? No, 40 is 6.13. Okay, 40-7-30, multifamily development, subsection each. States, bedroom mixed, all rooms exclusive of living rooms, dining rooms, kitchens, and bathrooms, which contain 70 square feet or more of floor area, shall be considered bedrooms. If any dining room is not directly accessible from adjacent to both kitchen and the living room, this shall also be considered a bedroom. Now, multifamily dwelling units shall contain more than three bedrooms. By reading this, I see that these are all bedrooms. They're not two-bedroom units, they're three-bedroom units. That's not included under 40-6.13. It's included under another. Well, this is the ordinance that applies to the zone, that's what we're pressing for. It's multifamily cluster developments. Correct. Seems like that's a- That's what I'm saying, it's multifamily cluster developments. Subsection 13, and you are just parking 10. Took it off the website, 46-13. 40, I'm sorry, 40-6.13, correct.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask some, the gentleman is up here to make the statement and he should be allowed to make the statement, but interchange between him and the attorney. Like, you have the microphone, you can speak, but it's not a-
So that's what it says on the-
We're just asking you a question, this is-
Right, but we need to move forward, there's other people that would like to speak as well. The other thing I'm seeing is that if you have a property with variances, you're not supposed to be going for more variances to the property, you're supposed to be going with less variances to the property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Gentlemen, you're in there. Please state your name and your address.
Hello, Amy Fay, 400 River Avenue.
Were you previously sworn in? Okay, good evening and welcome. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide to the extent you provide and will be the truth, to the best of your knowledge, to help you guide? Thank you.
I just wanted to mention that the homeowners that live right in the neighborhood, I think, speak volumes about what we want Belmar to be and what it is becoming. I'm a real estate agent, so I've noticed that the market really calls for people to take these old houses and renovate them and bring them back to their glory. If this were like Esberry Park or Spring Lake, you look at this house and the one behind it and people would just say, oh, find all the old world charm and just renovate it. And the market is there, people will do that. So we don't have to have the mentality that it's better than it was before. We don't have to have the mentality that it's not possible, that there are buyers out there willing to renovate these old houses. Also, this is not the redevelopment zone. This is the middle of town that we should be, I just hope that you hold, you know, the ordinances up to the standards that the town planning created. And when you look at a town and it's not the kind of town you want to live in, you know, do you ever look at certain towns and say, where, who are the planners of this town way back when? Why did they allow this to happen and that to happen? It could be so great here because of this location. And you look at where we are, we have the ocean, we have the marina. And it really, some of these old houses can be renovated. And I know for a fact as a real estate agent that there are buyers willing to do that. And so the mentality that we have to, you know, it's better than it was before in this market, you know, that mentality may be true in many cases, but not in this market. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Please come forward. State your name, your address.
Jonathan Falk, 506 11th Avenue.
And did we swear you one last time?
No.
Okay, good evening and welcome. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide to the extent you provide and will be the truth, to the best of your knowledge, to help you guide?
Yes.
Thank you.
This may be a minor point, it goes to the proposed bylaws, specifically the one relating to animal house and eviction. And actually, this is based on, I sheepishly have to admit that at one point I rented to people who were horrible, horrible tenants. And I evicted them right away. And in fact, one of you knows about this because Mr. Fowler is my neighbor and that's how we met, and that was rather embarrassing. What I would say is, the people who I rented to were so bad, they got, I think, three police violations the first weekend. It was just terrible. And I got them evicted very quickly, about six weeks. But I can say that I did not get an animal house violation. And so to the extent that the proposed resolution didn't require the owners to start eviction until animal house declaration happened, that would be a bit too long. So I don't know what interim steps there are between when the police first show up and when an animal house designation actually takes place. But I would think that somewhere in the middle there, whatever first, second, third notice, that should be the trigger when the eviction should occur. Because I don't think any of the neighbors should have to put up with an animal house situation for that long until the actual animal house designation occurs.
Thank you, Mr. Falk.
Go ahead.
Yes, sir. Please state your name and your address.
Yes, my name is Greg Glezmann, I live at 409 10th.
Can you spell your last name?
G-L-E-M-A-N.
G-L-E-B.
M-A-N.
M-A-N, were you sworn in the last time?
I was not.
Okay, good evening and welcome. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide to the extent you provide and will be the truth, to the best of your knowledge, to help you guide?
I do.
Thank you.
I really just have a question. And that is, there seems to be some question as to just how many units there are on the property. I thought there were only six, which I think makes a difference. But what I was wondering was, are there, have there or are there COs for more than six units on the property?
I don't, I don't believe so, we'll let the-
We have 10 units.
Currently.
We have asked for the COs for full time.
Yeah, currently.
And we'll go to six.
It would go to six if their application were to be approved.
Okay, I didn't realize you had 10, that would be issued.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, yes, ma'am.
My name is Arlene Nappal, and I've been here before. I own three properties in town, and I've been a Realtor locally when they meet for the last 30 years, 115th Avenue.
And were you sworn in the last time?
At a different planning meeting, not this one.
Okay, so we'll swear you one for this one, thank you. Good evening and welcome. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide to the extent you provide and will be the truth, to the best of your knowledge, to help you guide?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, first of all, my heart goes out for 109 11th Avenue. To have to live next to that and to be fearful is a horrible thing. I 100% agree with Mark, stop rewarding bad behavior. I understand there's 10 units, but they're tiny little one-bedrooms. I would like to know how many bedrooms are there currently as opposed to this either 12 or 18 bedroom plan?
I think the testimony that he has there is 19, is that correct? I don't recall.
Okay, so you have 19 and you're going now for 18.
No, we're going for 12.
You're going for 12, but according to Ted, who, by the way, tore down the two-family and built a single-family home, according to Ted, the living rooms and the dents could possibly be a third bedroom, so we're up to 18. So you're giving somebody a greater, you're asking for a greater density than what's there. I've been by your house, I understand Belmar, I've been here for 30 years. I've been to Ronnie's house, and her home is absolutely beautiful. She got rid of her back house, or whatever she did. She has a beautiful front house, it's yellow and white, and it's gorgeous. As far as the driveway, you have a 75-foot property, how wide is the driveway that would get you to the back, to the target?
18 feet.
18 feet. So basically, most tenants or most homeowners would prefer to park in the street versus going down 18 feet, come up with another person. Because if there aren't 12 bedrooms or 18 bedrooms, there's a possibility of more cars going in and out of that driveway. I don't agree with this plan whatsoever. I've been here, like I said, for 30 years. I was here when Belmar was 85% rentals. I lived through the reign of Pringle, he rezoned the whole town, single-family. This is the first time I've ever heard of the R75, the ordinance to get rid of the multifamilies. Mark is correct, stop rewarding the bad behavior. These animal houses, I've had an animal house, I had to pay $4,000. I, of course, got rid of the houses, I've gotten rid of five families where my property is. So there's only one house remaining, and that's Mark's. But I have the lots- is, so there's only one house remaining, and that's Mark's, but I have the lots right next to it. I've seen the town go, and Jimmy Albertis is a great builder, he does modulators, he would get these people to buy these three-family houses because they started getting hit with fines because of their tenants. So, they gave up, investors came in, and they built these cute, single-family homes, whether they were on a thirty-foot, or a twenty-foot, or a forty-foot property, that's how come twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen have become beautiful streets. So, Pringle's objective for the town, his master plan was not for condos, townhomes, sixty-foot anything, not for six units on a seventy-five foot property. He rezoned the whole town, single-family, and wanted it to be more like Spring Lake and Avon. And Mayor Doughty did a good job also. I would like to throw this gentleman a bone, and let him have what you guys wouldn't give Ronnie, he's getting rid of nineteen bedrooms, let him have a spectacular front house and a beautiful two-bedroom garage with a twelve-hundred-square-foot apartment above. That's what I would love to see, I'm sure one oh nine would love to see the same thing. Bradley Beach does that, if you have a fifty-foot road frontage, you can have a two-car garage in the back with twelve-hundred-square-feet apartment above. You can actually have the utilities below in the garage, so you literally have that twelve-hundred square feet of living space. It would add to the town. Tenth Avenue is gorgeous, if you've driven down Tenth Avenue, he could flip the house for one point six tomorrow, a beautiful front house, a beautiful back house. He could even make that Go condo, front house, you know, domaining it, and the back house with the garage, shared the driveway, there's so much you can do on a seventy-five foot property, even if, that's my first, what I would prefer for one oh nine is a front house and a back house. But, you guys are the board, and the attorney, and I respectfully say this, give them two thirty-seven-and-a-half-foot lots, build two single-family homes, sell them each for one point four. Amy and I are Realtors, Ray Church was here earlier, we could sell these, right Amy? One point four, one point five, where'd you go?
So, you could sell one oh nine.
And, um.
There's only one person speaking in this particular.
Oh, sorry. And then, the last thing I wanted to say is, I completely disagree with a thirty-day lease. The best, Amy and I are Realtors, the best condominiums in town are the ones that have six-month lease requirements, six months. We can't be renting these people for thirty days and having the crazy parties. You get six months, you're getting a family, you're getting two professionals, you get a couple flight attendants. So, those are my thoughts, I implore you to disagree with six, and.
I just wanted to remind you that the only thing the board can do is deal with what is for us, we can't deal with what ifs or anything else like that. Does anyone else have a comment? Yes, sir. Good evening.
Good evening. Mark Pfeifer, three nineteen Fifth Avenue.
P F E I. I'm sorry.
P F E I F E R.
Were you sworn in last time?
No.
Okay, good evening, and welcome. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide to the extent you're providing will be the truth, the best you know, so help you guide?
Yes.
Thank you.
I just wanted to speak about variances, and why so many variances do seem, at least my perception is, a lot of variances are given in the town of Elm, in the town of Belmar. Maybe my perception is wrong, but that's my perception. Personally, a developer in the back, my backyard, my house is like one house from Silver Lake. Developer bought the property in back of us, subdivided the lot, it was an irregular lot, a small lot, they needed an exception to put a larger building, a larger, single-family home. I was at the meeting, I said, that area already floods, now we're going to have less property. They allowed them to build a home, but they did not allow them to build a garage. So, I said, okay. The house gets completed, six months later, there's a garage on the property. But, I think, I had trouble hearing some of the reasons why they want a variance, I think the bottom line perhaps, and tell me if I'm wrong, is that the property they want to put up is too large, the building they want to put up is too large for the size of the property. And, right up the block, and you may remember, four, five years ago, and this speaks to having larger buildings on lots than you're supposed to. So, right up the block, about six homes up, the house was being built, a large, single-family home, it caught fire under construction. Four homes that night, because it was a strong wind, got destroyed, three completely. So, those families were displaced for about a year and a half, or two years. So, the point is, why are we thinking about even giving a variance if it's not for a human interest need? The couple before, okay, somebody who lives in the town, they get in an accident, God forbid, they have to be in a wheelchair, they need a variance to get around, going up to the house, fine. But when people buy a home, they know the dimensions, they should know what the code and regulation is. So, why do we just grant variation, variances to people to build larger homes than they're supposed to? Don't buy in the town if you want to do something that's outside of the regulations. So, I implore you not to.
Thank you very much. We have another gentleman there. Come on down.
Good evening. Good evening, I haven't been sworn in yet.
Okay.
My name is Juan Gonzalez, two oh eight and a half, fourteenth Avenue.
Okay, good evening, and welcome. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide to the extent you're providing will be the truth, the best you know, so help you guide?
I do.
Thank you.
I want to speak to the board, I also want to speak to the gentleman earlier, Jim, who lives on one oh nine. I want to share with you my story. So, we've owned the home in Belmar since two thousand and eight, we recently renovated it two years ago. We lived across the street from a massive animal house on fourteenth Avenue, we live on two oh eight and a half, two fifteen, you know, multi-story, big house, they had fifty kids in there every weekend, it was crazy. Our kids asked us, Dad, why did you buy this house? Why did you renovate this house? And the reason is because we love Belmar, we love living here. What happened? Somebody that had faith bought that animal house, is completely renovating it, the entire block changed. So, it can happen. You've heard three Realtors talk about how the market is supporting the development of Belmar. So, why should we do this? Why are we going to do this? This doesn't make sense. Let's not do this, guys, okay?
Good evening.
Good evening. Mary Brennan, four oh four eleventh Avenue. And I was sworn in only.
Thank you.
Last time. I just want to piggyback on what everybody else has said. I really, you know, you so eloquently, Manny, talked about the previous couple's clear hardship. I'm not clear about any hardship here, and I think that's your mission, to, you know, judge and weigh whether the hardship is caused to give these variances. And, from what I've seen in the plans and heard from the residents, there doesn't seem to be any other hardship than trying to get out of a situation where there's animal house violations now, and doing it in a way where they can, you know, benefit and make a profit, and still not be in keeping with what we want in our neighborhoods. And my second point is, even though I truly understand that you judge every single application on its own merit, if this is granted, I think it will set a really dangerous precedent for the rest of the town. Come forth and try to maximize their profits and their building in such a way that our vision, under Mayor Pringle and then Mayor Doughty, was not to have that kind of building in town. And I was part of that initial thinking, so I certainly feel very strongly about it still. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Counselor, I wasn't here for the last meeting, I was out of the country.
Okay.
My name is Peter Terranova, eight hundred B Street. It's T E R R A N O P I.
Okay, great, and welcome back. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide to the extent you're providing will be the truth, the best you know, so help you guide?
I so affirm.
Thank you.
My question primarily is the zoning officer could answer, or the borough engineer. If this were undeveloped land, what would maximum number of units be allowed on that property?
One.
One. Ordinance that Council was referring to, or section of ordinance, that was placed in the borough's land use ordinance, was meant to be used as a tool to help transition certain neighborhoods, but you're not bound to give the variance based on the fact that it's in the ordinance. And that's an important distinction. It's just a tool for you to use. The fact of the matter is, if this were undeveloped land, it would be one house on that property, that's it, one unit on that property. And I think you need to take that into consideration. When we look at it here, the board, nowhere in your ordinance does it talk about the lesser of two evils. That's an important distinction. We look at what's occurring right now on Tenth Avenue, Ninth Avenue, houses that have the backhouses are being torn down, and are putting up brand-new, one, single-family dwellings. The other issue I'd like to point out is, having been in enforcement of planning and zoning and construction codes for forty years, I want to know how local enforcement agents are going to be able to deal with bylaws in the resolution? How is he going to enforce this? It's a very difficult tool for him to use. He doesn't need attorneys just to enforce that. And I don't see that as a viable option here, for you to place in a resolution for the enforcing agent to use. It's not going to work. Forty years of enforcing the law, it doesn't work for the local guy. You're putting a burden on him that he can't handle, or she. It's a little tough. He's got to run around and try to enforce that. Not going to happen, I don't see that as a viable tool. If you are going to grant this variance based upon the fact that, well, we get something better than we had, I don't think that's in the best interest of Belmar, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Yes?
Rose DeGania, two oh one Ninth Avenue.
Did you say your last name?
D A G A N Y A.
N Y A, did I say your last name?
No.
Okay, good evening, and welcome. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide to the extent you're providing will be the truth, the best you know, so help you guide?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry, I'm going to be repetitive again, but I think the property there, it was a mistake the first time, all of the overdevelopment on that piece of property. But I think making a mistake again would be a tragedy. It just, it's making a mistake again by allowing this over, I don't, it's not redevelopment to me, it's overdevelopment. So, I think if we look at it and we want to improve the property, it would be a single-family home or something like that. Again, mistake the first time, cottages, backhouse, big house, all this other stuff, let's not do it again, please.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion of the application process, and Mr. Kennedy, do you think it's appropriate to put it up to board comments? Sure. Is there anything else?
Mister, we'd just like to, I don't know if you want us to speak here, do you comment?
No, sure, why don't you, why don't you go ahead now?
Okay. Just a couple things.
Sure.
And I understand some of the members of the public weren't here when we presented the first, the case back in January. And I also understand there's some niceties here that even us attorneys would get confused about in handling cases like this. This case has to do with an existing ordinance in town that we're replying, or requesting relief from, and that's forty-six point thirteen. And, that ordinance, anyway you read it, is specifically set up to encourage people with more than seven dwelling units on a piece of property to get rid of them, and we placed that to allow multifamily development on the property. The case law that was cited at the last hearing by our planner, I don't want to put the planner on again, but is basically governed by the coverage to re-square versus Westwood zoning Board Adjustment. And that case says, where you have a conditional use, the board's job is, in essence, is a use which is permitted in the zone, but subject to specific conditions, which we don't need, that being the fourteen thousand square feet and the way the units are set up. And the case says, the board requirement is for this type of variances to analyze the nature of the conditions, the extent of the variance, and make a determination whether or not, on a whole, the site is still appropriate for the use despite the deviation. And it was testimony at the last hearing from the architect, from the engineer, that all the setbacks are met, front, side, rear, the density is met, the coverage is covered, everything in your ordinance is met. I can understand, people say, well, it's a good market, we can do this, that, the other. We're trying to do what your ordinance, and I compliment Mayor Pringle on what was done over the last ten, fifteen years, maybe a little bit more. But I think this ordinance was put in place specifically to encourage people to get rid of what history and has, and that's why we're here. We're not here saying, oh, we'd like to subdivide the property into two minor lots, or, we're trying to do what an ordinance allows, would allow us to do, but for, we have twelve, eleven thousand, two fifty, you're supposed to have fourteen thousand in the way the units are set up. That's, with all due respect, that's what you're supposed to be looking at, okay, in our deviation. And then, Mr. Antipin would like to say something?
Sure. I thank the board for hearing our case. There's been a lot of talk about rentals. I'm in the rental business, we purchased this property as a rental property. I agree the animal house are a problem, but rentals are not a problem. Kids are a problem. Do you think somebody's going to spend four hundred fifty, five hundred fifty thousand dollars and rent the kids?
I doubt it.
I seriously doubt. I think that these are a great addition to the town. I'm going to retain it, I like the town, I, you know, stayed in town here, own property in town, I think it's a good thing. I think if you're thinking that this is going to be another animal house, I beg to differ. There's just too much money involved here, that an individual, as yourself, do you think you would just rent the kids? I doubt it. Do you think you'd want to rent to respectful families? And I think that's what you're going to get, you're not going to get kids.
Thirty days.
Come on, I.
Let me speak.
I don't think you're going to get kids. I don't think the homeowners are going to allow that. I know, me, being the association, I want to preserve my property. I want to make sure that if I want to sell my unit, that my value's going to be maintained. That's, that's part of this thing. I think if we try to limit the rental, I think I'm never going to sell the unit to anybody. I think that if you have dissociation in the back end, limiting everything, and if it's approved by the board, you can't change the bylaws. If that's the stipulation we agreed to, that runs with the property, as many as, that's If you don't grant this, and I understand you can say no. We bought this as a rental property, we're either going to continue renting to kids, because, listen, they're not that nice. I'm not getting families in there, which I would prefer. Or, we turn it back into full-time rentals, and when we had it as a full-time rental, when we first started, all we were getting are public assistance people. And that really, we tried to refrain from that, that's, you know, just too much hassle, too many different people, you know, in the act. So, I don't want. So, I want the board to really consider that this is an development project for the town. You don't want this, this, this animal house thing here. I don't want it. I don't like getting calls in the middle of the night, coming down. I just want to take a look at that. I'm not really asking for much that's not dictated in the ordinance. I mean all, just about everything. I'm, I'm less on density on the new development than I am currently. I just want you to consider all these, these things. I mean, rentals are not a bad thing. If you're gonna get families in there, and you're gonna control the rentals, you get kids in there, that's it. That's the idea, getting the board to approve anybody who's gonna rent there. That's what I've been telling them.
Would you consider going to four units?
I just, I just, we're in that zone, I, I wouldn't consider that. I mean, I'm...
So let me ask you this. Would you consider the idea?
Do you want to go to board comments for that? Sorry. I think we probably should apologize, chairman.
I'm done, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We're gonna go to board comments at this particular point, and I think we'll start out with Mr. Gregg.
All right, I want to just deviate from the board comments because new information has come up that I do have questions about. And it's been mentioned, this, I've got several, the thirty-day minimum rental, somehow I don't see that working for me. If it's not a hundred and twenty or a hundred and eighty days, I doubt that I could agree with that. Thirty days is such a short section of the summer, you're still dealing with summer rentals. So make it a hundred and eighty days, and then you've got something substantial, you're renting, you're renting to more likely a family or a more permanent-type renter, other than that, I just don't agree. The trash collection that you mentioned is, how close is that gonna be to your neighbors? And is it gonna be in an enclosed room?
It's an enclosed... A six-by-ten fenced in with a gate.
So if it smells, it's not gonna make a difference? So the neighbors will smell it?
Right, right.
Just ask them. That's why if it was in an enclosed, a cement room, cover on it, maybe it'd be a little bit different, but it's just a fence. Okay. How close are the AC units to the neighbors, and do you know the decibel levels of them?
I don't know decibel levels.
How close are they to the neighbors?
They're not within a side yard, I know that. Maybe ten feet.
Ten feet to the neighbors? And they're commercial units, so what we would look at is, they're commercial units, so we'd look at them as potentially larger than a homeowner, which I...
They would be residential units.
They're residential units.
Why would they be commercial units?
Why would they be commercial? I don't know. Are you looking at it?
They would be residential.
There's one unit for each unit?
Yes.
Oh, one AC unit for each.
For each unit, right. There's six units total, they're all residential. And I don't know if you know that, the new units are much quieter than...
They are significantly quieter.
Yeah, than older units.
I do know. Water runoff, is that water collection that you're going into a drywall?
Yes.
And that's where the entire property, that whole property is draining into that? Or just the roof of the building?
The property now drains undelayed out to the street. There's an inlet at the corner of A Street. That's where the water winds up, in the town storm sewer at A Street.
Okay, all the water from the, from the existing site?
All the water currently winds up at the intersection of A and 10.
And what?
And after development, all the water winds up at the intersection of A and 10, with the exception of the new pipe which infiltrates some of the water, which is actually less runoff than presently exists.
Okay. Mr. Gianni, could you clarify for us the bedroom situation? One fellow had mentioned that if it's over seventy square feet, is it considered a bedroom? Is that a part of our rules?
You can't, you can't control that.
I know you can't control it.
You can't control, I mean, the building code has a, has a, not a requirement, but definition of that, but...
But then if it is then a bedroom, do they need more parking than they currently have? Is it considered a bedroom? If it's no closet and it's over seventy...